Welcome, everybody, to our Wednesday, September 3 community of the whole meeting. At this time, we will have our pledge and our moment of silence.
United States of America.
Mrs. Faust, when you're ready, roll call.
Dr. Faulkner. Mr. Garman.
Here.
Dr. Green. Mr. Gregg.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman. Ms. Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Reichert.
Here.
Mr. Umbriak. Mr. Reichert Jr.
Here. Item two, public comment. Public comment, max of three minutes for agenda items only. Presentations tonight. Take us to number four, academic affairs and mental health agenda items, and that'll take us to the Year in Review Magazine, and I believe I'll turn it over to Need for that.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. If you could bring that magazine up, I just wanted to, I had shared this electronically with the board and shared this with our community as well. But board members, you will see in your folder a physical year in review magazine. This is the second annual year in review magazine that we've created as a district. In here, you're going to find, I've written a letter to the community, and you're going to see that we have highlighted the academic successes of 24-25, the successes in the arts from 24-25, our community outreach, and then also our athletic successes. I'm certainly proud to be an Ironman alum myself, proud to lead this district, and we just have students and staff members who've just done amazing things. And this is an opportunity to just showcase the fantastic work that we do in the district. So kudos to all of the staff and families in our district. This is available on the website. That's our current, the 24-25 year in review, and below that, you'll see the 23-24 year in review, and we'll continue to add to those as time goes on. But wanted you to be able to see that. We do have these available in all of our school offices, and we'll be working with human resources at Gay Singer and our local Realtors to ensure that they have copies of this magazine as well. So as people are relocating to Danville, they can learn about our fantastic school district. The next item I have is, I have also shared this information, but just wanted to take a moment to publicly acknowledge this at a school board member or at a school board meeting, and to any community watching and to our newspapers. Thank you to the Daily Item and Danville News for your coverage. We're just beyond excited about this honor. So Danville High School was named the number 25 high school in the state of Pennsylvania. This is a tremendous honor, and this measure comes from analyzing our graduation rate, our achievement in algebra, English, and biology Keystone exams, our participation in AP exams, and also our performance on AP exams. So it's an extremely comprehensive measure. We are the, this is the highest ranking Danvilles ever received, and we are more than 20 spots higher than anybody else in this large portion of the state. So it's super proud. Congratulations to our administration and staff at the high school, but honestly throughout our district, because it takes lots of preparation to get students to that place. I had an opportunity to speak and send a note of congratulations this summer to one of our math teachers, Mr. Toby Gerhart, who teaches two of our AP courses and has just amazing success on them. And when I sent him a note of congratulations, he immediately responded and said, "Thank you, this means a lot." But this thanks goes to every math teacher in Danville, because from kindergarten on, they've prepared students to sit in my class and be ready to take an AP level course, which is just a testament to his character and certainly leadership in that department, but is absolutely correct. To get this honor as a high school does take the work of the whole district. But, once again, feel very proud to be an Ironman, feel very proud to leave this, lead the district, and just kudos to our students, our families, our faculty, our staff, our administration. It's a tremendous honor. We will be doing a public acknowledgement of this in October at a home football game. We'll be having a celebration for our students and assembly for our high school students. We're getting a gift for our high school teachers, a gift for our students. So we'll be, we're in the planning stages now of making sure that everybody understands just what a tremendous honor this is. So those are the two items that we had in academic affairs this evening. Does anybody have any questions or comments? That takes us to finance, and I will turn things over to Mr. Mavis.
Thank you, Dr. Need. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. First item on, under finance is consideration for the board to approve head start and pre-K counts additional stipends for employees. That will be on the agenda for next week. The last time this was processed was in September 2023, and it does require the board's approval for those stipends to be approved. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. I wanted to provide the board an update on our PlanCon Part J audit for the high school auditorium and renovation project from 2017. We did receive a draft of that audit today from KLASIC, and so I've submitted that draft to Crabtree for the architect's review. Once the audit is finalized by KLASIC and the certification is made by Crabtree, the audit will be provided to the board for acceptance. There is a small chance that that would be possible for next Wednesday's meeting, but if not, it will be in October. And we actually, we have two staff members from SiteLogic here tonight, and I would like to recognize Mrs. Brenner Smith for her assistance on that project. She might be the last remaining PlanCon Part J audit specialist in the state at this point, and so we're very grateful for her assistance with that. But, so that, that final audit will be provided to the board either next week or, worst-case scenario, in October. Next slide, please. I just wanted to make the board aware that we were monitored in July for one of our PCCD grants. That's the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. And over the past several years, PCCD has been a funding vehicle for multiple physical safety and mental health grants made available to school districts. The grants usually cover, you know, they don't neatly align with a single fiscal year. They're often approved for, you know, January 1st to, you know, of 2024 to December 31st of 2026. So it actually, these grants will cover three different fiscal years, and there's a regular monitoring process that districts have to undergo for these grants. You get randomly selected by PCCD, and for the grant that they selected, there were no issues. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that. Next slide, please. Next week, we'll also have an agreement for your review with Interpretech. Interpretech is a service provider of virtual sign language and interpretation services. So last month, the district approved independent contractor agreements with sign language interpreters that can be onsite with students that need that service. In the event that they would be unavailable, Interpretech would give us the option to bring in a virtual sign language interpreter via computer. They have a minimum two-hour commitment for any interpreter services, and that, that rate is $152 for the first two hours, and then $76 per hour for each additional hour, billed in 30-minute increments. So that'll be for your review next week, and that contract is in your folders as well. Next slide, please.
I wanted to speak to this agreement that you'll see as a contract to approve for next week. So Pearson is the company that we use for our Ironman Cyber Academy, and we changed things this year and are going to a direct contact, contract with Pearson. We used to go through like a third party, so we have had a reduction in our cost of approximately $15,000 by going directly with Pearson. I did want to just share some, I shared some of this with the board, but just wanted to publicly also state some successes of our Ironman Cyber. I think it's very important for board members and for our community to understand that the current structure in Pennsylvania allows for students to enroll in an outside cyber charter school that is at a direct cost to the taxpayers in your school district, and then you have no oversight into the education a student receives there. The performance of our cyber charters across Pennsylvania is, quite honestly, abysmal, and I know, we're a top 25 high school, that we are providing a better education here in Danville. So we're working really hard for students that cyber is the right approach to make sure that they understand that we have our own Ironman Cyber Academy here, and they can remain Danville Ironman, they can graduate with a Danville diploma. We have fantastic cyber teachers. I do just want to commend the work of our administration and our cyber teachers. We right now have 1.44% of the DASD student population that is enrolled in an outside cyber charter school that is at a cost to the taxpayers of about $400,000. We have the lowest student percentile enrolled in outside cyber in our region. The average student population enrolled in outside cyber in our region is 3.9% of student bodies in other school districts. I think it is important for board members, for our community, so that we can advocate to understand that in our region, $14 million of local money is being put out into outside cyber charters with no oversight from those local school districts. Most of our local school districts in the IU region are spending $800,000 or more, with several as high as close to $2 million. I would definitely prefer to take that $400,000 and do great things here in Danville, but I'm very thankful that we have such a successful program that we've at least been able to reduce the cost to that. So we wanted to share that that was, agreement was there, but also just wanted to share that information with the board.
I know that you have mentioned before, but do we actively try to bring?
We work very hard to try to bring students back. I do a campaign to reach out to all students involved in cyber every year, as does our high school cyber teacher. Mr. Brent Sample is fantastic at his job, and he personally calls every single family doing that to explain what we can do for them here in Ironman Cyber. And we've had a good success rate with that. I would also just like to commend Mrs. Delgado and Ms. Wenrick, because a lot of times, students that are going to outside cyber have some other like complicated situations, and they've worked very hard with families that we've brought back to make sure all the right services are put into place here so that they can be successful in Danville.
And just because they're in the cyber program doesn't mean that they don't, or they can't actually come into the building then. They can still receive services here at the school then also.
Correct. Yes, and we work with students for what's best with them, if they would function better physically here out of our cyber lab, if they'd function better during the home, or some sort of hybrid version. There are even some students at the secondary level at the high school that might take an online course in one subject area, but be an in-person student for other subject areas. So we work very hard with families to make whatever sort of unique program they need. So thank you. That takes us to long-range planning, and we had talked the last time about presenting some information that just gave all board members a solid background about the current state of the financial situation here in Danville and kind of the outlook moving forward. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Mavis, and would just like to thank him for his time and effort in preparing this for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Need. So I believe this is the future of the Danville Area School District's finances as it relates to our long-range plans and any major facility upgrades we might have. We're going to cover the district's current debt, the future debt capacity. We'll review a quick, several scenarios on a five-year outlook and discuss some options for paths forward. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. This slide, which, if you're looking at it online, you'll be able to see the detailed numbers, but this slide shows all of the district's current debt across several different bond issues. And then on the right-hand side, the total annual debt service. And so we're currently at about $3 million a year in annual debt service. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. It's important to note that within that $3 million in debt service, we do receive back approximately $300,000 in reimbursements through the PlanCon program. And so that brings our total local effort to approximately $2.7 million annually, and that is the level we are at through approximately the 2034 fiscal year, and then that debt starts to come off. Mr. Ryan, next slide, Mr. Ryan. So some of the quick numbers on our existing debt is that we're at $2.7 million per year through fiscal year 34, and then by fiscal year 40, that annual debt service is reduced to $750,000. We are currently at 5.6% of our current budgeted expenditures applied to debt service. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. And that existing debt serviced some very important projects here at the Danville Area School District. Of course, the primary school, which we're in now, the high school auditorium and renovation, the high school stadium, and the Liberty Valley renovations. Next slide. Looking forward, our borrowing capacity is set by state law. The way that's calculated is a three-year average of revenues less, less exceptions, and then that borrowing base is multiplied by 225%. That gives you the total non-electual debt limit that the district can take out, and from that, you subtract the outstanding debt, and that gives you the remaining borrowing capacity. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. So the next slide, this slide shows how the borrowing capacity of the district will change over time. At the top, it calculates the borrowing, borrowing base, and then the calculations for the non-electual debt limit are factored in. And the last line shows how the borrowing capacity changes over time. Mr. Ryan, if you could go to the next slide. We just focus in on, you know, the final row there, the remaining borrowing capacity. We're currently at about $65 million, and over the next nine years or so, that grows to about $95 million. And that growth is due to regular growth in revenue, which will increase the borrowing base, and also as debt is paid off, that, that gets us closer to the debt capacity being the borrowing base itself. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. So the quick numbers for consideration on that is that we're currently at a borrowing base of approximately $45 million. Our non-electual debt limit is approximately $100 million. Our debt outstanding is approximately $35 million, which leaves us with the remaining borrowing capacity if we were to go to the very legal limit at $65 million. Next slide, please. In order to fund new debt, there are several options. The simplest and most pain-free way is to be able to refinance existing debt at lower rates. That's not possible for the district. Good work was done to refinance debt when it reached historic lows during the COVID period. Another option is to use existing operating surplus to absorb that new debt expense, and that's what we'll be mostly talking about when we get to the five-year projections. Another way to fund new debt is to see growth in revenues above growth in expenses, and so you can build debt service into that. And then finally, when it comes to embarking on major projects, there's a strong recommendation to use debt first and then cash at the end of the projects, as there is an impact on the district's credit rating if cash balances are depleted. So on that front, next slide, Mr. Ryan. The district's credit rating is very favorable, but with each issuance of new debt, that credit rating gets reviewed. And the factors they're looking for are the community's local economic conditions, the district's financial the district's financial position, the status of major taxpayers, our audits being filed in timely manners, and then the district's cash position. So we want to maintain our high credit rating because there are benefits in terms of the rate that we can borrow at. And also at our current credit rating, we won't be required to purchase bond insurance. So there would be savings there. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. This slide shows, and from a distance here, it might be difficult to see, but if we were to embark on a plan where we'd be borrowing up to approximately sixty million dollars, we would actually do that in multiple stages. It wouldn't just occur in one swoop of borrowing. You'd start with an approximately ten million dollar bond issue. We'd finalize plans, get a sense of where total project costs would come in at. We'd borrow the majority of what that would, what that would take. And then the final step is we'd, we'd take out an approximately another ten million to finish out the project. One of the key takeaways from here is that with each step, you're adding in new, new debt service and increasing your total local effort. And if you could go to the next slide, please, Mr. Ryan. These are very, very round numbers. But just for our consideration, depending on rates and depending on how much total debt we would take out, a guiding principle is that for each ten million dollars in additional debt, we will see an approximately five hundred thousand dollar increase in additional annual debt service. So if we were to take out ten million dollars of new debt, we could expect five hundred thousand in additional annual expense. And that would bring our, our current debt service as a proportion of the total budget to six point six seven percent. And then the table shows where those figures lie as you go from ten to sixty million. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. In terms of funding that new debt, the most likely scenario is we would be using our existing operating surplus and converting that operating surplus into annual debt service expense. And so this chart shows where our operating surplus has been over the last five years. We're currently in a range of approximately one million to two million dollars in operating surplus. And the far-right column shows where our general fund, fund balance and capital reserve, total fund balance are as a combined unit. Next slide, Ms. Ryan. In terms of where that operating surplus currently is and where it might go in the future, it's important for us to consider expense factors and revenue factors for the district. On the expense side, just like with every other school district in the state, the main driver of expenses is of course personnel costs for salaries and benefits. We could expect the salaries and benefits to be in the range of two to four percent. And then on the healthcare side, we're currently expecting healthcare costs to grow over the next several years at ten to fifteen percent. The industry average for healthcare costs is between seven to eight percent. But it should be noted that for a period of time, over the last several years, our medical loss ratio was actually above one hundred percent. And so that means that our insurer was paying out more in claims than we were paying them in premiums. And so we should expect, and this is a discussion that goes back to last December, when we, when we moved to the PSHIC model, we should expect that we'll probably be above industry trend for a period of time as that imbalance is settled out. So we moved to PSHIC last year. That's a self-funded insurance model. But we were, under that consortium, we are given a true rate cap of twenty-five percent. And our prior insurer was unwilling to give us any rate cap based on where our medical loss ratio had been. So, but BSI is still projecting, come next July, that we'll still be in that ten to fifteen percent range. On the expense side, on the positive for the district is there was a major retirement incentive that took effect. And also a personnel reduction through attrition through that retirement incentive that has had a major impact on salary costs. So, Mr. Ryan, if you could go to the next slide for just a moment, please. I just wanted to demonstrate the impact of that over the last five years. You see fairly consistent growth in salaries. And then actually from fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-five, we've actually seen a decrease in salary costs at Danville Area School District. And that's, that's reflective of that, the impact of that retirement incentive. You can return to the prior slide, Mr. Ryan, thank you. The great thing for the district is that those savings are in place and they will compound over time. The drawback is there's, there's not another set of low-hanging fruit to, to pick out there. You know, we'll, we'll review on a regular basis whether or not there's, there's a retirement incentive that could positively impact the district in the future. But that, you know, that, that first incentive had a large impact and it's unlikely we'll see such a dramatic impact in any efforts going forward. On the revenue side, the board's capacity to raise local real estate taxes is capped by the Act One Index, excepting for very few special circumstances. And the historical average for the Act One Index is three point two percent. Two years ago, it was five point, the, the rate was five point one percent for Danville Area School District. This fiscal year, it was four percent. And the base rate was just announced at the end of last week. And for the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year, the base rate for the Act One Index will be three point five percent. So we're, we're quickly returning to that historical trend. And that's also a sign that, you know, just wage inflation and inflation across the wider economy is, you know, also returning to trend. A factor that the board should be aware of is that, you know, these are round numbers once again, but for each one percent of real estate tax increase that the board selects, the district generates approximately two hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue. On the earned income tax side, the, the current earned income tax rate is, is at maximum. So there's no room to increase the rate. But earned income taxes do grow, tax collection does grow over time as salaries and income grows across the region. So even though that rate is currently at maximum, we do, we have seen over the past ten years approximately two and a half to three percent earned income tax collection growth year over year. On the state revenue side, we are negatively impacted at the Danville Area School District by the Adequacy Fund Plan, which is in place for another five fiscal years if the legislature holds to that. The, for any dollars that are driven into the Adequacy Fund, Danville Area School District receives zero of those dollars. So that's, of course, a factor that, that will drag on any state revenue growth in the future. On the federal side, if there would be increases in federal revenue, it's likely that they would be tied to existing programs. And so it's possible that, that expenses, additional expenses could be covered where those, that could save those expenses from needing to be covered by local dollars. But there's no guarantee there. And then finally, there's the potential for a local revenue impact from the closing of the Cherokee Plant, which has been reported to be occurring sometime in twenty twenty-six. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. Next slide. So with that in mind, just have several scenarios for consideration for how, and as we'll see here, we're going to leave revenue factors set in place so we can just consider what expense factors do to any potential operating surplus that we might currently have. So the first scenario is where we're starting at a two percent salary year-over-year increase just across the board as a premise. Seven percent increase on medical, thirty-four percent PERS contribution rate, which is what the current contribution rate is. There is some discussion and some projections that that rate might need to increase into the upper thirties or low forties for a period of time here in the next five to seven years. But it's been around that thirty-four percent rate for a few years now. So I think for, for our discussions tonight, it's fair to leave it at that. On the revenue side, we're projecting two percent revenue growth from the state, three point five percent growth in real estate taxes over time, and two point five percent earned income tax. So that would be scenario one. And then we'll show scenario two where salaries increased by three percent and medical by ten. And then in scenario three, salaries increased by three point five percent and medical at fifteen. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. So this is scenario one. And, you know, on the right-hand side of the table, we're starting out with the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and projecting that we'll finish this school year with an operating surplus of one point five million dollars. And that projection is based off the fact that in, in the district's balanced budget, we have programmed a capital reserve transfer of five hundred thousand dollars and a budgetary reserve amount of approximately two hundred thousand dollars. And so if, if we're able to hold firm on all of our other revenues and expenses, we would essentially be finishing the year at an operating surplus of seven hundred thousand dollars. And I think it's reasonable to, to project that we might be able to have another eight hundred thousand dollars of surplus, which is just a little over one percent. You know, so if, if our projections for revenues are one percent better than our projections for expenses, we'll finish around a one point five million dollar operating surplus. And in this scenario where salaries are growing at two percent and medical is growing at seven percent, they're basically keeping up with each other. So even with the reduced state subsidy growth, we're able to match revenues and expenses. And so that operating surplus stays fairly steady state over time. I should note that the two percent state subsidy growth is higher than what the governor's proposed fiscal year twenty-six budget is for schools like Danville that don't receive any adequacy funds. We were projected to receive a point five percent increase if everything holds to that, to the governor's proposed budget. But of course, we know that that, the state budget isn't passed yet. And so that figure is yet to be determined. But I think over time, a two percent factor over five years is fairly reasonable to expect. So let's take a look at scenario two, where salary growth is coming in closer to three percent, medical growth at ten percent. And we do see that at this point, and these are, you know, these aren't item, you know, item-level budget requisitions. These are just looking at major expense factors and major revenue factors and seeing how they, how they grow over time. But under these assumptions, we are going to see expenses outpacing revenue. And so over the five years, if we're, if we finish this year with a one point five million dollar operating surplus, we start to see that being impacted by the growth of expenses faster than revenues. And, you know, we could probably only safely replace that operating surplus with debt in an amount close to one million dollars. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. And this is where we're starting to get on the high end of our salary and medical assumptions. And, you know, since that's, that's the only area we're, we're changing, we see that those expenses are growing faster. And so the net impact is that we eat into that operating surplus more quickly to the point where things, by the end of that twenty-nine, twenty-thirty school year, we might, we might be close to not having an operating surplus at all. So essentially, any debt service that we would be taking out where scenario three is holding true, we would be running a, a structural deficit and dipping into fund balance year over year to, to cover some of those debt service payments. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. We do have major projects, though, that, that need to be considered. And in terms of funding those projects, there, there are only, you know, several options available to the district. Of course, the ability to take on new debt allows us to do in the here and now more than we could do if we were to slowly accumulate cash and put it in capital reserve. That's the other way to handle projects is to use your capital reserve. Currently, we have approximately four point five million in the capital reserve. Another factor that's fairly new is a program that was just initiated by the state last year called the Public School Facility Improvement Grant Program. Last year, schools were able to apply for competitive grants up to an amount for projects up to five million dollars. And if awarded, the district would be on the hook for twenty-five percent of those project costs and the state would cover seventy-five percent of them. The Public School Facility Improvement Grant Program is not designed to allow new, for new construction, but it is designed to do repairs and renovations on existing school buildings. And finally, I just wanted to include PlanCon in here because the district will likely see a one-time reimbursement related to us completing our PlanCon Part J audit for the cash that was expended as part of the, the high school renovation programs. But that, that program is currently under moratorium and has been for almost a decade now. And there's, there's no reason to expect that they will re-initiate PlanCon and use that to help subsidize new, new school building construction. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. So some open questions for the board to consider as we look into the future is, one, will the state maintain its position on the adequacy funding formula throughout the, the remaining five years of their seven-year plan? I should note that while Danville is one of two hundred districts across the state that receives zero dollars that are driven through the adequacy formula, two hundred of the three hundred districts that do receive adequacy funds would actually have just been better off if all of the funds were still driven through the original BEF formula. So there's four hundred of five hundred districts across the state that would actually be in a better financial position if the district, if the state reverted to the original BEF formula and found another mechanism to deal with the adequacy funding lawsuit. Second question that will impact district finances is will the Act One Index drop back to its, its historical average of three point two percent? Because that really sets the district's, the board's ability to, to raise revenue over time. And it's already on that trend. You know, so we've gone from, you know, over five percent to this fiscal year, four percent, to next fiscal year, three point, three point five percent as the base rate. So we're already kind of trending in that direction. Another important question locally is what will the total impact of the closing of the Cherokee Plant be? That will certainly have an impact on the district's finances. And then another item that we have some uncertainty currently about because we've only been in, in the program for a little over seven months now. But what will the, what will the growth of medical expenses actually be under the PSHIC consortium? And so we, you know, I requested some, some early numbers for BSI, but we'll, we'll start to get better numbers from them closer to, you know, the November, December timeframe based on our nearly, you know, one-year history under the program. And that, that will help us make more accurate projections for the, for the budget for twenty-six, twenty-seven. And then all of these questions kind of tie into the final question, which is how sustainable is any existing operating surplus? And that's an important question for us to consider because that, that basically is, is where we might be able to take on new debt to tackle any proposed projects. So next slide, Mr. Ryan. As we look forward, the board does have the ability to, to take action while some of those questions remain open. The board could choose to initiate the process of borrowing the first ten million to fund projects across the district. While that's going on, a long-range facility plan could be selected by the board and, and movement could be made with an architectural design and engineering study that actually gets, gets a actionable plan in place. And this is where the board would, would have to select amongst the options that have been discussed over time. You know, the two main ones being the elementary, secondary campus and then the option of three buildings where DHS becomes a seven through- and then the option of three buildings where DHS becomes a 7 through 12 high school. And then, of course, it's also important to note that the discussions about the fields across from DPS should still remain active. And if we're working with a firm, it would be prudent to, to include that, those plans as part of that, that process. While that's also going on, we could prepare plans to remediate the basic infrastructure needs of the middle school and seek state grant funding through the Public School Facility Improvement Grant Program, where if, if awarded, we would be getting three state dollars for every local dollar spent. And so while some of those plans that were listed above have us actually exiting the middle school, we're currently in it. And the, the better we maintain that, that facility, if we were to ever exit, the easier it would be to sell the facility, and the more likely it would be that, that the building would, would be useful in the long run for the community. And while all that's going on, we would want to consistently come back to the district's financial position and reevaluate as open questions are answered. So, you know, if the, if the state were to pass its budget tomorrow, we'd have a pretty good indication about how likely it is that they'll, they'll stick to the adequacy funding plan through the full seven years, or to what extent they might try to mediate between funding through the old BEF formula and the new adequacy funding formula. So those, those are questions that, that we can't necessarily answer locally. But as, as that, as the future comes into focus there, we would want to certainly continue to evaluate that.
Mr. Mavis, she's spoken on an earlier slide about the benefit, how it would be necessary to borrow sort of in stages. So could you speak about why, like, why the number 10 million? And what it looks like to borrow that first 10 million and that process? And why we'd start there with anything that we'd do?
Yeah, so once, once you go above 10 million, there are additional restrictions and requirements that come into play for issuing new debt. So, so if we were to, to start with any initial plan to take on new debt, we'd want it to just be below that, that $10 million number. That's why on that, that slide, so several slides forward, Mr. Ryan. The font will be small when we get there. Yeah, this slide.
This one.
So step one, there's a reason why Jamie Doyle proposed 9.5 million rather than 10 million as a round number. It's just that there's, there's smaller offerings have less restrictions. So we, anything that we'd want to start with in terms of debt borrowing, that, that first amount, we'd want it to be less than 10 million. That would allow us to cover the costs of architectural work, engineering work. It would allow us to have funds in place if we would move forward with a Public School Facility Improvement Grant Program application to cover the local, the local match portion of that factor. And then, and then if we were to do larger projects, then, you know, the, as the plans come into focus, that's where you'd have a major offering, you know, that, that gets you the majority of the funds that you need.
Mr. Mavis with the grant. Sometimes with grants, there's a timeframe you're locked into. Commitment? Like, if we would be awarded a grant to make improvements to the middle school?
Kind of like the FEMA grant where it's 10 million, or 10 years? I'm not aware of that. When I was reviewing the Public School Facility Improvement Grant Program, I wasn't necessarily looking for that, though. So I'll have to, I'll have to look into that in more detail. But that's a good point, that we wouldn't want to find ourselves in a position.
Stuck there for 20 years because we took a grant that.
Yeah, fix, fix the roof.
I mean, I'm sure we could find a use for the building, but yeah, I mean, I wouldn't want to, I mean, even though it'd be, you know, like you said, $3 every one that we would spend, lock us there for 20 years, that would.
Don't believe there's that language, but we will certainly make sure.
That's a good point.
So if, if I got my math correct, so scenario one for the increase in healthcare would be roughly $360,000. Scenario two would be an increase of $515,000?
10%, yep.
And scenario three would be almost $3.25 million?
Correct. Our annual medical expenses are approximately $5 million currently. And that number was also impacted by the headcount reduction and the changing in, from the retirement incentive, so.
That's a reduced amount, actually.
Yeah, that's a reduced amount. But yeah, that's, that's approximately where, where we're at. I mean, healthcare costs are underappreciated by, you know, by many people. You know, the family plan is, you know, very expensive. There, you know, there are some districts taking action.
Probably talking $25,000, $30,000 for a thing.
Correct.
I get it.
Yeah.
I think in terms of some next steps that could be appropriate for the board to consider, not that they have to be loaded on next week, but would be like next places to go would be that we could initiate the process of borrowing that first. It would actually be under 10 million to not have the guidelines that come when you go beyond that that could help us with any portion that we'd have to pay in a Public School Facility Improvement Grant and help to do some repairs that maybe need to be done to just kind of stay with our existing buildings as they are. That would give us time to then discuss if there's future borrowing and look at options. Certainly, I think Mr. Mavis has presented that we're in a solid place currently and have been very fiscally responsible, but with costs what they are and with what the state is giving us, we don't have this, like, let's go do $100 million project. So we wanted to, like, make that. But that would allow us some time to look at other options. But the other thing that would be good for the board to be considering that is a more immediate step, again, doesn't have to be next week, but sooner than later, is if whether or not we would want to pursue an improvement grant for the middle school because we are in a place where while we're making these decisions, we do have a building that is having, like, HVAC concerns, roofing concerns, things that can specifically be covered in a grant like that that could buy us more time in, in that building.
I do want to add too that don't want to be overly pessimistic about the situation because there is a cost to that as well, in which case, there's just an opportunity cost where if we, if we project too pessimistically, then, then this time gets lost.
Take action.
And, and the next window that really opens is in the late 2030s when that debt starts to roll off. And so as that time progresses, the community would then have to cover additional construction costs as, you know, inflation takes action. We also need to be careful to not be overly optimistic because then we could find ourselves in a position where we're eating into our fund balance at a rapid rate. We're locked into contracts. And, you know, we, we certainly don't want to put ourselves in a position where we could potentially negatively impact the programming that's going on in our buildings, which is, you know, bearing good fruit. So we have a careful balance to strike as we move forward. I should also note that that change on the state revenue side does really make it hard for us to grow an additional operating surplus. You know, the, the board can probably, we can probably find ways as a district to keep up, you know, our, our revenues with our expenses as they're growing. But if we were, if we were seeing an additional, you know, $600,000 to $800,000 year-over-year from the state, you know, that would allow us to grow that operating surplus fairly quickly.
Which is what we used to see.
Yes, and that's where, where we used to be. But the state also has, you know, in defense of them, they also have projections showing that, you know, their structural deficit eats away their fund balance in three to four years as well. So, I mean, it's a challenging environment. So the last time it opened, there was a fairly rapid turnaround. Basically, you had approximately three months or so to get, to get from, they, they released the program to you had to have bids, you had to have everything lined, and this was in the spring of 2024. You had, you had approximately three months to get everything around. There is a lot of talk about maintaining the program in spring of 2025, but that's, of course, on hold until the state budget's actually passed. But I imagine if they would pass it, there'd probably be a fairly rapid application window as well. That's just how that, you basically had to have, like, shelf-ready projects, you know, ready to go, so.
So it'd be good, I guess, from our timeline to get a sense, like, would you like for Mr. Mavis and I to be working on shelf-ready projects? So that when we see that that opens, we'd feel, not that you couldn't say no when we present it, but that there's some sense that pursuing sort of the three-to-one financial model from the state is worth doing some repairs at the middle school?
So the reality of it is, is we're not getting out of there tomorrow.
Correct.
So I would say if there is money available to be had, it's going to restrict us.
Right.
Yeah, restrict us to being there. I think that that would be the option we should pursue. So it probably would be wise to get a list together of the most major concerns at building. That way, when that window does open up, I don't know if that entails the actual things. Have a contractor, anything ready to go?
I know with the, the prior window, you needed three budgetary quotes from contractors for whatever project you were looking for. There were procedural items that the board had to approve a resolution allowing the district to go out for the funds, had to specify who is authorized to sign off on the grant project. They had fairly, they had fairly strict requirements for receiving the funding. And, you know, specific contract language that has to be in there, that uphold state employment and nondiscrimination laws. You had to post a sign at your site showing, stating that the project was being funded with the Public School Facility Improvement Grant. And then you had to have, you have to have, you know, when you submit for reimbursement, you have to have that documentation there. So that, yeah, that, coming back to your, your, your question, yeah, I mean, there, there are steps that, even though the, the program isn't open yet, we could still be laying the groundwork to be ready. I mean, at the very least, we'd be able to know what, what projects we'd want to go after. Where, and it, and once again, it's, it's a, that program is a competitive grant program. So just because you apply for X amount of dollars, it doesn't mean, yeah, it doesn't mean you, you get it or that even if you do get it, that they fully fund the, the project. So there are some schools that, that got everything they, you know, when they, when they applied for a certain amount, they got all of that amount. And then there were some districts that, you know, they applied for $2.5 million, but they're awarded $700,000, you know? So the question came up, like, how are they going to be able to actually complete that project if, if not fully awarded? So it's a challenging program.
Always know if you don't ask, right?
Correct. Yeah, and, and I don't know if this will benefit the district in any way, but we didn't ask in the spring of 2024, which made sense just where the district was financially and where the discussions on projects were. I, I don't think there, there, there weren't obvious projects that it would make, make sense to. But at the very least, if that program reopens, it would be our first application to it.
Sounds like it could be appropriate for us to be putting together a project proposal and appropriate motions for permission for us to apply should that window open. And that's probably something we could have ready for October, which would also, I think, put us in position for when we'd hear something from the state anyway.
I, I would.
That's being optimistic, probably.
Optimistic.
But not on our end to be ready for October, but on the state's end to be ready for October.
That sound good with everybody else that's here?
Sounds good to me.
Because, let's face it, we need the building for now.
Yeah.
I'll know it's like the redhead steps out of the district, we know, but we need it for now.
I'll look into the, the contract language to see if there's timeline.
Steps that we should be taking.
Steps that we can take now and also timeline restrictions. There's a stipulation that.
For 50 years, we're in this building.
Yeah, that, that, that would not be worth it.
And I know Mr. George has already given us a list of things down here that are major to minor. So I know we are a head start of what needs to be done down there. So I guess the biggest thing we want to, want to factor or want to kind of zero in on would be the things that would make the difference. If that's the option we go with, what kind of investment do we put into it?
And I think even just a priority of when we're going to see that repair being needed anyway. So it's going to come to us as an expense in terms of the reality of the timeline of getting out of that building should we ever get out of it. That does take us to buildings and grounds unless there's any additional discussion that board members have. So within buildings and grounds, our first item is payment for projects. Will there be any payment items this month?
Yeah, there will definitely be a payment application from Converse Consultants, who are the geotechnical firm that provided work on the tennis court, the base course that came out and did the compaction testing for us and also the, the study to show that, you know, once that was milled, that the, the base court. We may have finalized documentation from Keystone for the last payment for the tennis court. We're waiting on some documents at this point from them for that and also for. Next slide, Mr. Ryan. Speaking of the tennis court, I just wanted to share a thank you to the firefighters that came out to perform the flood testing. And so pictured here are firefighter Michael Howard, junior firefighter Michael Crawford, Lieutenant Cody Faust, junior firefighter Michael Sights, junior firefighter Colby Manning, and Captain Brad Harvey. And so this was the crew that came on site to perform the flood testing at the tennis courts so we could, we could locate those, those sections that needed repaired. And so we're, we're very appreciative for their work. And next slide. Just wanted to, to highlight that the, the new courts are, are in use. They are open for practice on August 11th. And the tennis coaches hosted a, a grand opening on August 12th. That, that was a wonderful event. And, you know, we're just, we're happy that they're serving our students and also our community so well. I think, you know, Keystone did a beautiful job finishing the courts up. I think, you know, Keystone did a beautiful job finishing the courts up.
If you go to the next slide, you'll see, unfortunately, an opposite view of tennis courts. So we're super excited about our new high school courts. These are images from our middle school tennis courts. You will see a letter in your folders, board members, from the Seltzer Group. So our insurance company has provided us with this letter. I'll just read aloud sort of the first paragraph. "Please accept this correspondence and follow up to a meeting held on August 27, 2025 to discuss the unsafe conditions and potential hazards associated with the deterioration, severe cracking, and drainage issues present at the middle school tennis courts. The damaged court surface has rendered the courts unplayable and unsafe for any public or school use." This presents a significant potential liability risk for the district, and they are asking that we officially take the courts out of service. So tomorrow, we will be locking the courts and putting signage up that lets the public know that they're unsafe for play. Wanted you all to be aware of that, but do feel like for liability purposes, we do have to lock them. A decision does not have to be made immediately, but I would say that moving forward, there's essentially three options that we'll, in the long run, need to consider. One is that we have chained up unplayable courts, which ultimately become an eyesore for the community. Another one is that we choose to either use some district funds or maybe there's community effort. I know there are a lot of people in the community that are interested in pickleball and tennis, and maybe there's grants and community fundraising that could help us actually repair these courts. And then the third option would be that we just, like, physically pay to have them removed from the facility so it's not an eyesore or a danger. But at the present moment, we will be locking them for safety purposes. I will send a message out to the community via all of our means in the district. Obviously, this is also being shared today to let them know we hate to take community play away, but we do need to ensure safety. You see there some of the really large cracking, how water is damaging it. And what you see on the left is where we've even tried to do patchwork and where the patchwork has actually just sunk into the ground because the base is not secure. So don't feel like that. And obviously, our insurance company confirms that it's not safe for play. That takes, we don't have anything in athletics or extracurriculars or policy this evening, so that takes us to personnel. And this month, for approval, you'll see the hiring of paraprofessional positions, the hiring of a varsity softball coach, and the approval of our winter coaches. And that is the last thing that I have to share this evening. So that takes us to board concerns, I believe, Mr. President.
Any board concerns or items that you would like on the next meeting agenda? Is there any public comment?
Merry Christmas.
Not everybody. We will be retiring to executive session to discuss personnel. Everybody else, drive safe, have a good night. We'll see you next Wednesday.
Yes.
Hey, you got Jimmer's tax bracket figured out for him?